Okay. Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:33. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you for joining ANC 34G at our July 28 regular meeting. My name is Lisa Gore and I'll start with Commissioner introductions, starting with Commissioner Goslin.
Hi, I'm Peter Goslin. I'm the Commissioner for District 6, which is largely the west side of Connecticut, back to Friendship Heights with a peninsula to the east of Connecticut Avenue to Nevada between Military and Legation. Thank you for being here.
And my name is Lisa Gore. I am Commissioner for ANC 34G 01, which is all of Hawthorne and portions of Barnaby Woods. And I'm Chair. We'll be chairing a meeting for you tonight. Thank you for coming. Commissioner Sherman?
Hi, I'm Bruce Sherman, Commissioner for the 02 District, which is north of Military bordered on the east by Oregon, on the west by Utah, and on the north by Tennyson. Welcome, everybody.
And Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, hi. Good evening. I'm Liz Nagy. I'm the Commissioner in SMD 07, which is Military Road south to Chevy Chase Parkway and Nevada on the east and Reno on the west. And welcome to our meeting. Thank you for coming.
Commissioner Finacy?
Good evening. My name is Laura Finacy and I am Single Member District 4, roughly between Western on the north McKinley on the south Broad Branch on the west and Utah on the east. Thank you.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, Commissioner Simmons. I'm Single Member District 05, which is the east side of Connecticut from Legation all the way to Western, all the way back to Broad Branch, which borders Ward 3 and 4.
And Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, I'm Carol Grunwald. I'm Commissioner for SMD 03, which runs along Utah, along the northeast, 27th Street along the east, Broad Branch along the south and the west. It jigs over a bit onto Morrison and then extends to Nebraska, rejoins Utah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. And we're still admitting folks. We're up to about 30 people on the line. But just to remind everyone regarding meeting procedures, we'll have two minutes for Commissioners, two minutes for community members. We have a resident forum section where community members can raise issues and concerns with the Commission that is not on the agenda. When a topic comes up that you want to speak on, please use the Raise Your Hand feature. That is in the middle of your screen under React. If you use that, then we'll call on you. And we just remind everyone to be polite. We are going to try to get through tonight's meeting in an efficient time. There's quite a few of the Commissioners on vacation doing the meeting from remote locations. So we want to respect, obviously, community time and Commissioner time. So Commissioners will try to move through this expediently. And with that, is there any, are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd just like to make a point, following up on what you said, Lisa, which is that I'm down in very southwest Virginia and I'm concerned about this Zoom connection. So I apologize for that, but I do hope that we can keep this very short. I really am gonna have to leave after something like 90 minutes. Maybe I can extend it a little further, but I'm, so I hope that everybody can be concise. Thank you. And I guess I raised this in the agenda part. If there are any required votes, I hope that, I'd suggest we move them up. So that's just a suggestion, but.
Okay. Commissioner Simmons?
Yes, I wanted to add something related to neighborhood cleanups to the, to the agenda. I probably only need three minutes and I'm requesting a vote.
Okay. Okay, I don't have a problem with that. Commissioners, Sherman?
Yeah, I request to remove the item regarding the Pepco rate hikes and postpone that until September. The Office of the People's Council needed two to three weeks' advance notice to appear, which we didn't have, and they have confirmed for September.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes, Commissioners? Commissioner Nagy?
Question for Commissioner Simmons. You're wanting a vote on neighborhood cleanup? Is that what I'm to understand?
Yeah, I'll go into more detail when I get to that point in the agenda. I was just pointing out that I'm gonna request a vote. Peter would like to have votes early on, limited, just being transparent.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda, Commissioners? Okay, so I move that we adopt the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Raise your hand, all in favor. Commissioner Grunwald and I'll see Commissioner Nagy. Commissioner Grunwald, what's your vote?
Yes, I'm voting in favor.
Okay, thank you. 7-0-0. Okay. And since you're asking for votes, Commissioner Simmons, and you're gonna be three to five minutes, maybe you can go after Commissioner Goslin and before Commissioner Sherman?
Okay, that works.
Oh, no, I'm about to go out and take.
All right. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the meeting minutes for July 14. Commissioner Simmons, can you lower your hand?
Yep, sorry, my turn?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I, I move that we adopt the minutes from the July 14 meeting with leave to make technical corrections.
A second. Commissioners, any discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your hands. 7-0. Is that the only one, Commissioner Nagy?
That's the only one tonight. There's nothing else. We've, we've covered them all. They're just not, the, the July, the June 25 minutes were finalized. I think you signed them. That's the one you signed. And I'm still finalizing the two other ones, but they don't require a vote. So that's all we got.
Okay. All right. And this portion of the agenda will move to the resident forum. Community members, if you have anything that you want to bring up or questions or concerns to the ANC, we allow this portion of the agenda for you all to do that. If you use the Raise Your Hand function, I'll call on you and you can present your issue. Does anybody have anything they want to say on this one? How you posted in the chat? Thank you. Okay. Then nothing, we can move on to updates from Mayor and Councilmember staff. I see William is here from Ward 3 Mokers. William, do you have an update for us?
Yes. Hello, Commissioners. Hello, attendees. Thank you for having me. My name is Willie Moen Cox. I'm the Ward 3 Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Community Relations and Services. Just one quick announcement, one to share about the Mayor's Office of the Clean Cities Adopt a Block Program. It's a free program and the Office of the Clean City will provide you with all the materials to clean up two blocks of your choosing every quarter. And it's a great way to be involved with the neighborhood, meet other neighbors. My manager Kendall Gibson actually just adopted a block in her neighborhood, Ward 1. But Ward 3 has the lowest number of adopted blocks in the city. So we'd want that, we want that to change. So please, if you would like to sign up, I'll put the link in the chat. It's adoptablock.dc.gov. But it's a really great way to get involved with the community. And like what my manager does is there's an area that she's adopted right inside her house. So she's walking along and sees, you know, a discarded drinks can or something. She'll just pick it up and throw it out. But that's part of the Adopt a Block mindset of just keeping that area clean. You also get a fancy sign on the block with your name or organization's name on it. So it's a fun opportunity to show off if you have a business and you want to take part in helping out your, your block. So I'll put the link in the chat, but I hope folks sign up. And we'd like to see more Adopt a Block participation in Ward 3, so please consider it. Thank you.
Commissioner, continue the question. Then Commissioner Goslin?
Question. Owen, you have ESP because that was something along with what I wanted to talk about today. With this program, I haven't looked at the link yet, but do you give pickers, like to pick up the trash or no?
Yes, so I think that for the quarterly cleanups, we'll provide them to help out with the cleanup, but I don't think that we buy them for permanent use. It's that we would, we would organize a quarterly cleanup and then we would then hopefully try and get back the pickers and stuff until the next time because we need them available for the entire city.
Okay.
But yes, we do organize those where we bring them for designated pickup day.
And then is the quarterly cleanups, because I know DPW has something similar from March to October, but they don't do pickers, but this one is year-round too. So if it's like nice weather in January, pickers could be requested?
Yeah, I think it's, it's something that you would coordinate through the Office of the Clean City. So whenever those dates are, but yes, we would want, if you have a group of people together, I've never organized it myself, but I think you would reach out and say, I have, you know, 15 neighbors who want to help clean up. And then we, we would reach, you'd reach out to the Office of the Clean City and then they would organize, you know, how many pickers to need and work on the dates.
Thank you.
But I did like seeing your agenda item. I was like, oh, this is perfect. So glad to hear it.
Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, just piggybacking on that, I will grab the, the link and, and get the material. I've been talking to President of our neighborhood, Steve Connors, about, about the fact that some blocks on the west side of Connecticut are a real mess. And I want to, I want to put a, start putting a call out right here to gardeners. I'm a big gardener myself and I think that a group of us, besides doing a pickup, could do something about the tree boxes, which are a whole mess right now. And there are some blocks that are really good about maintaining the tree boxes, but the last two blocks on, on the west side of Connecticut are, are in need of some work. So I'm a little slow on the draw here getting this started, but by hopefully well before Chevy Chase Day, we'll have those, we'll, I'll try to gather something for my SMD about cleaning up those blocks. Thanks.
Then Nagy, then Finacy?
Thank you. Hi, Owen. Hi. I'm just wondering, are these pickers terribly expensive? Is this something that would either be an appropriate or not too expensive purchase for the ANC to have them on hand for whenever we wanted them?
I mean, that's something that the ANC could consider. But I think that just with the number of claims we do, because we have larger numbers of adopt a blocks in other parts of the city. And so we regularly are utilizing the pickers and sometimes they don't all get returned. So it does add up, I think, over time. But, but yeah, that might be, that might be something to consider. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
There are Finacy, then Simmons, then we should move on.
Hi, yes. I had a question about the signs. We've actually had like a lot of extra signs come in the neighborhood over the time. Like there's like playground coming up, stop sign coming up, and there's a stop sign and there might be no parking. And I had actually asked DDOT for an extra sign in the handicapped parking zone at Lafayette, which is very big, and to help with people parking there illegally. And they refused to give me a sign because of sign clutter. So is it required that adopt a box have a sign? And what if people want to adopt but don't have a sign? Can they have, can they do that?
That, I can ask the, the head of the Office of the Clean City about that. I am not, I'm not sure. I'll ask and I can circle back to you. But I would think that if it isn't a problem of too many signs, I don't think it would be too difficult to not do a sign, but I'll check and I can get back to you.
Yeah, but it just seems, there wasn't a budgetary reason that DDOT wouldn't give an extra sign for Lafayette parking. They said specifically it's sign clutter.
Gotcha.
So I feel like, you know, if Adopt a Block can get a sign, I want my handicapped parking zone at Lafayette to get a sign. So maybe you can wave a magic wand.
Oh, well, for, for that, I mean, if there's an issue with too many signs on the street, I would then check to see if that is the case on a street, would that restrict the, the Office of the Clean City with the Adopt a Block sign? So that was something I would check because it, if DDOT is saying there's too many signs on the street, that may then limit the Adopt a Block signs, but I'm gonna double check on that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other person on the line from Councilmember's office or Ward, sorry, the Mayor's Office for updates? Okay, we have none. We'll move on to our agenda items. Now, one of the things I had on the agenda was an update from MPD regarding a recent theft from the Wilson Pool. I had texted and tried to communicate with Lieutenant Olivier and did not get a response back from him. So I'm gonna keep this for September. Hopefully, we can close out some of the questions some of the Commissioners and community members have. But just to update the community, I didn't get a response from MPD on this, so we won't have the discussion tonight. But we'll move on to discussion and possible vote on the BZA application number 21340, which is a special exemption for final accessory building construction located in the side yard of 3048 Oliver Street Northwest. And this is Commissioner Sherman's agenda item. Commissioner Sherman?
Yep, thank you very much. Let's elevate my constituent Shannon McMahon and Andrew, her husband, if he is available. Marty Sullivan, their attorney, is also going to be joining us to make the presentation. But I want to recognize Shannon first of all. And if we can, Shannon, if you can come on video just to say hi, if you're able to do that, that'd be great.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Great, great to see you guys. And Marty Sullivan, Marty, also, if you can, there you go, activate your video. Hey, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Great. Let me, let me just tee this up quickly, then turn it to Shannon, to you and Andrew for any comments you'd like to make at the top, then you guys can pass it off to Marty. He can walk us through it. But Commissioners, first of all, we're pressed for time tonight, right? You've got, you've had the presentation, you've seen it. Let me just ask, as we get into this, how much detail you think you need so we can gauge the amount of time we spend on this accordingly? Do any Commissioners have any questions at this point about the request? Not that we won't have them walk through the basics, but I just want to start with that.
No, I don't have any questions on it. I mean, I think it was self, you know, explanatory. I would say just a quick, you know, two to three minute overview for the community members so that the community is updated with it.
Very good. Okay, Shannon and Andrew, let's just start with the two of you, since you're the homeowners. If you'd like to say a few words to the folks about what you intend to do, then Marty, you can kind of give us the quick overview and then we'll, we'll move to vote.
Hi, everybody. Andrew McMahon, my wife Shannon, we're at 3048 Oliver, obviously. We're planning a two-story addition, adding family room, kitchen, primary. And that's about it, keeping most of the backyard. We have kind of a weird lot where the garage sits kind of mid lot versus either no garage or back of the lot. And so that's why we're kind of passing the garage, the front of the garage in this case. So that's it.
Great, okay, good. Marty, if you don't mind, just kind of quickly, quickly walking us through it and the, the case for the special exception, and then we'll, we'll move for, to a vote.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner. Can I share my screen?
Yeah, sure. I think I made you co-host, Marty. Can you drop this here?
Yeah, it looks like I got it. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, can everyone see that? See the house?
Yeah.
There, this is the front of the house. Okay, so I'll start with, this is the existing garage accessory building. And if you see it on the map here, it's in the middle of the property. And that's the source of the special exception requirement. So there is a requirement that you can't have an accessory building in a side yard, meaning you can't have it next to the house itself. This is an odd case where we need relief because the addition being proposed brings the house back so that the accessory building is now in the side yard. But it, but it already exists. So the addition itself complies with side yard, rear yard, lot occupancy, height and all that. It's just the fact that it happens to be adjacent to the accessory building that, that's why relief is required. It's essentially accessory building relief. I have it all listed here. I won't go through the whole thing, but, but the, the test is the standard light and air, privacy, character scale and pattern, whether or not the proposed relief has any impact on that. And because the addition itself is complying with the regulations, it doesn't have any impact. We, we have support from both adjacent neighbors and from the neighbor across the alley. So, and the architect is with us here if he wants to go through this. But let me see, I might have an issue with the size on this.
Marty, I think, based on, not to interrupt you, but based on what you've just, barring any questions or concerns from Commissioners, maybe we could pause right here based on what Marty's just explained and Shannon and Andrew have explained. Commissioners, any questions, concerns, comments? Again, Marty, not to truncate your presentation, I.
Happy.
And Shannon and Andrew, are you guys good?
Yep, good on our end.
Okay, so if we're all in agreement, I will move to vote on this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great show of hands to approve their request for a special exception. Looks like it's unanimous.
7-0-0.
Thank you.
Okay, Marty, thank you. Shannon and Andrew, sorry we couldn't keep you longer.
All the guys thanked us all.
Thanks.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. And next on the agenda, Commissioner Simmons, the grant application presentation for Chevy Chase Day grant application.
Yes, I think, Rashine, he's here.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Hi, Rashine. Do you need to be made a co-host to share anything or are you just talking?
No, not at all. It's very, it's very straightforward. So first of all, I want to myself, everyone, I'm Rashine Carbon. I'm the President of the Chevy Chase Community Association. As you guys know, every year we put on Chevy Chase DC Day in the common area between the library and the community center. And historically, we've had an ice cream truck. We haven't had the last couple of years. The last time we had it was in 2022. It's always very popular. We have secured funding for a portion of the costs. We got $850 from State Farm. We're asking that the ANC help us out with $1,425 to cover the rest of the costs. And that would pay for 650 pieces of ice cream, which is the amount that we served in 2022. And, and that's it. By the end, Chevy Chase DC Day, the September 20th this year, from 1 to 4. And I hope, I hope all the Commissioners will be there. So far, Councilmember Matt Truman will be there. Councilwoman Janice Lewis George, the mayor unfortunately won't be able to join us this year. But we tend to, we invite all the at-large council members and of course the ANC's.
Thank you. Commissioner Nagy?
So Rashine, hi, how are you?
Good.
I just have a question. When you said 650 pieces of ice cream, the grant that you want, the $1,400 is to cut, is? But that's the, so State Farm is putting in 850 and you need 1,400 to pay for 650 ice creams?
Yes.
Is that right? So we're talking about?
That's.
Right, so sorry, yeah, that total will pay for 650.
$2,400 for 650 ice creams. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
That wasn't, that wasn't clear.
No, it's, it's fine. Thank you so much.
And that's about less than $4 of ice cream.
Yes.
Kids, but those ice cream trucks cost a lot of money. So that's a deal.
One of the reasons why we did this also, or we came back to this, is last year, an ice cream truck just pulled up and started selling and people were mistakenly thinking it was free. So we want to avoid the confusion that we had last year.
Now, I was one of those people.
All right.
Any other questions, Commissioners, on this? Any, Commissioner Finacy?
I just remember in our ANC training, there were very complicated rules about food and not food. And we're okay to do this, right?
We're okay to do it, yeah.
And it's because it's open to the community. It's not isolated.
Right, and we're not selling anything on the, on the grounds, right?
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
So Lisa, the next step would be for us to vote on this at the September 8 meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Nagy, yeah, go on.
You're unmuted.
No, I'm not anymore. Thank you. They saw that. Thanks. Rashine, are you reaching out to other businesses along Upper Connecticut Avenue for more funds to pay for this? Or just?
We have reached out. Yeah, we have reached out to other businesses and our, our response has, we've just gotten a lone response from State Farm, but they've, they're historically have been a sponsor of it.
Thanks.
Yep.
Francia, Commissioners?
I just, I just want to, just, I hope my fellow Commissioners will support this grant request because it's part of Chevy Chase Day. It's a big day, 2022. You know, my kid got ice cream. Last year I was like, hey, why isn't this free? And I know we are very generous with other things that we have requested to use ANC funds. So since this greatly supports our community, I hope that we will support it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, seeing no other questions. Thank you, Rashine. And we will, I guess, see you again at our first September meeting when we take the vote and ask any, answer any additional questions the Commissioners or community members might have at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking forward to Chevy Chase Day. I'm assuming that you guys will have a table for the ANC, at least one to two tables?
As always, yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, and I just placed a link in the chat, is discussion impossible vote on a resolution supporting State Board of Education Resolution SR 25-9, which calls for changes to compulsory public school attendance and enrollment requirements. And Commissioners, I'm introducing this resolution, which basically just taps behind the State Board of Education resolution. For community members that might not be aware, there are several families in our community and in the DC community that were having issues getting their children enrolled in kindergarten due to the way DC Public's, DC Public Schools' rules were on attendance. Some of them were, well, pretty much all of them were trying to get their children enrolled in kindergarten. And because of cutoff dates with their birthdays and other issues, they were basically initially told that their kids were going to go straight to first grade. There's been a lot. There's been a lot of discussion with the mayor's office, with the chancellor, with the principal at Lafayette, Principal Prawl. And I spoke to one of my constituents today, and from what I understand, Chancellor Farabee wrote a letter that did set up a process, so addressed some of the recommendation in the resolution, but not on a permanent basis, on a temporary basis. But he basically set up a process for children that their families think that they need to be evaluated to determine which grade they should be in is going to occur. And with some of those families, it has occurred. They're still, from my understanding, waiting on a decision, but he did issue a letter instructing them in the schools to, you know, do the assessment for those children and how that process would take place. And the resolution that State Board of Education drafted, they focused on three main things, basically the elimination of the September 30th birthday cutoff. And just to make that, you know, quick and easy or short for you guys, DC has one of the latest in the country. So they're calling for an elimination of that. They're also calling for the alignment of compulsory attendance age with first grade age entry. And kind of what Farabee was trying to address, a planning process to ensure that local education agencies can implement those changes equitably and effectively. So parents are aware of them. In the resolution, I, I linked to their resolution and the three pieces of proposed legislation that they put forward, which is the Let Students Attend Kindergarten Emergency Amendment Act of 2025, the Emergency Declaration Resolution, and a Let Students Attend Kindergarten Temporary Amendment Act of 2025. And just to add that the State Board of Resolution passed with almost unanimous vote. There was one representative that abstained, but it was fairly a unanimous vote. And in addition to that, ANC Commission 3D at its July 2 regular meeting by unanimous vote, Hornby and present, supported the State Board of Education proposed legislation as well. So on the resolved, I am asking that ANC 34G expressed its strong support for the State Board of Resolution's proposed legislation, that it urges the council to move expeditiously to enact a temporary legislation and a permanent law that allows those things, the students who turn five years old on or before the 31st of a given school year to enroll in kindergarten that same year, and eliminates inconsistencies between the compulsory attendance age and first grade entry age. Request that the Office of the State Superintendent of Education and a Deputy Mayor of Education publish an implementation plan addressing enrollment projecting, projections, staffing, classroom space and outreach to families, making sure that our families understand the policy and that the policy is implemented equitably across all wards. And calls on the mayor and the council to include sufficient funding in a 2026 budget to support additional kindergarten seats, early childhood professional development, and any necessary facility modifications. So with that, I will take any commissioner questions and questions from the community. If you have any. If none, we can proceed to a vote. Commissioner Finacy?
Yes. So am I understanding that, so right now, like if a child turned five by Sept- on like September 25th, that child would have to go into first grade?
Right.
Now that child would, could go to kindergarten if they wanted, are, are, is there flexibility to go to first grade? Are you asking that everybody who turns, that the new age cutoff is December 31st? Because that's diff, that'd be different from MCPS.
Right. So what, that is currently correct. They would go to first grade. What they have proposed in the interim, and this is the letter that from my understanding, Commissioner Chancellor Farabee sent out, for those parents that feel that the first grade option is an inappropriate option and they want their kid to go to kindergarten, he has temporarily, and I believe this is for this school year only, set up a, an assessment process. So right now, and in my discussions with the mayor, when we met with the mayor, there is no flexibility in the policy. They basically said, there is none. But he has since come out with a letter where he is proposing an assessment process. And then the assessment and the results and the furthering decision is up to the principal. So it's still a lot of gray area for families. But you know, there is some movement on this with DCPS trying to be flexible. A little bit, but we need a lot more. Commissioner Nagy, then Simmons.
Then I don't remember seeing this resolution before right now. Did I? And missed it?
Yes, you didn't.
I did. Okay, then I apologize. I just didn't see it. And the press to do it now is? What?
Well, because parents are trying to enroll their kids in school.
They have the temporary letter from the chancellor, right?
Right, but that's
That takes care of this year.
No, not really. It doesn't really address the entire issue. It's a portion of the issue. If you read the proposed legislation, they're very clear on what needs to be addressed from a legislative process. State Board of Education, which we know are mainly educators from all wards in the city, pretty much all said the same thing. There needs to be a legislative fix. So the letter is just a Band-Aid on a very larger, broader, more complex issue. And the urgency is that kids are trying, their parents are trying to get their kids enrolled in school. And if the mom or dad feels like their child should be in kindergarten, they're having a fight right now with the school system who's trying to put them in first grade.
I know the issue. I, I know the issue. I just didn't
Yeah, so that's the
I didn't see the resolution, but now that I look at it, sorry, let me interrupt you. Are you finished?
The other urgency is that the council, in order to enact, well, you know, the council is getting, well, they're going on recess. So we were trying to get all of this documentation in, and our resolution is running a little late prior to the council going on recess, recess, so they can propose the emergency action. So that was the other push to get this done as soon as possible.
Just a technical thing, I was looking at the resolution. When you put it in the, the chat, and at the bottom, it's, it talks about how many people approved it. It's probably not right.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
Yeah, so you'll need to change that.
That'll be correct.
Yeah, just letting you know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep, Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, so I just wanted to add in on a question that Commissioner Nagy mentioned, that the letter only addresses this year. So going into next year, if there are any families who have, who may want to delay their child entering in kindergarten or first grade, then that's still going to be there. And then I just wanted to point out one thing with the letter was that students were going to have to start first grade and then they get their assessment later in the year. But this, this, with this letter, it's allowing parents to do the assessment ahead of time so that the children will have, like, start first grade, they get assessed, they need to go back to kindergarten. So then you have a lot of that transitional and changing in the middle of the year and shuffling. So just wanted to add that.
Yep. Shannon Wolf-Trager, then Commissioner Nagy.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to thank the commission for taking this issue on. You know, as a mom with kids at Lafayette and, you know, many, many friends in the neighborhood who are facing these challenges. It's, this is a critical, critical issue. Parents are trying to do the best by their children and making the best decisions they can with the information that they have in hand and, you know, really finding themselves in a horrible, scary place going into school this year when they thought their kid was going into kindergarten and now they're being forced into first grade. Kindergarten is such an important time for kids. This guy just finished kindergarten this year. And so it's just, I really appreciate you taking this issue to heart and doing something to provide some relief to the families who are facing this issue. It takes a long time for schools to move their budgets, their planning, their staffing, their classrooms, all of those things. So you know, the question about like, why now is the sooner the better so that everybody can align around the necessary resources to even start for next year.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's, this has been a long battle that a lot of our parents, quite a few of them in the community have been fighting. And it's, I've talked to a lot of people. I've talked to the mayor. I've gone to battle for them every way I possibly can. I just, as a parent, can't fathom knowing that if I honestly felt my child needed to attend kindergarten, that I had no option, no say in them not going to kindergarten and instead being put in first grade. And, you know, some of the children, the parents have conveyed, you know, either delays or, you know, developmental needs that they really, really strongly felt required them to be in kindergarten. I know some of the children have been assessed maybe unofficially by their teachers, or at least their teachers have supported them going into kindergarten. And then to have the school system say no to that, they're going in the first grade, that is horrifying. It's very traumatic and it has been very traumatic for our parents. So I'm grateful for the ANC to continue to listen to these issues and to take up this resolution for them. Commissioner Finacy? Laura, you're on mute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I I just want to
You're breaking up.
Yeah.
I thank Commissioner Gore. I'm a teacher and I am. And I think my connection
We can hear you. Oh, we can hear me? Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to okay, just wanted to thank you for joining in on this. I'm an elementary school teacher and we really do see a huge difference in readiness in Montgomery County. There is kind of an early admit process as well as a delay and parents can weigh in and really have a lot of flexibility. And I look forward to the day when DC follows that model.
I agree. Yep. All right. Any other questions from the commissioners or community members on this? Okay, so commissioners, I call for the vote for the ANC to support the proposed resolution with the friendly amendment from Commissioner Nagy to change the vote counts, which I will do. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. Okay, seven, zero. Thank you so much. I know the parents are going to be happy. Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate it. Thank you, Shannon. All right. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Commissioner Goslin, discussion impossible vote on Capital City Little League request to extend field lighting.
Well, this is a, this is a, I think, a very simple issue for us. Cap Cities uses, puts a great deal of use to, puts a baseball field at Chevy Chase Playground to a great deal of use. And they're needing to put it to more use because of what's happening at Lafayette. Their field coordinator, Mark Welborn, who is not able to be with us tonight, has asked that we support an extension of the hours that the lights are on at night from 9:15 until 10:00. I have, as the SMD Commissioner for, for this area, have personally written to say I support it, but I would like to ask the full commission to support it. We, I may separately come to you in September asking for your help in getting the the, the district to respond to a request to extend the light, to actually get the lights on for the tennis courts, pickleball courts and basketball court at the playground. This has been turned into a drama that has taken several months. But I think right now, just for Cap Cities, I think we all ought to support this at least in part because we're, I mean, they're trying to find resources to make up for what they've lost at Lafayette. So I'd ask that you authorize me to draft a letter, or we can make it as a resolution, but I think this is adequate as a letter on behalf of the whole ANC, supporting this relatively minor extension of the house.
Commissioner Nagy?
Thank you. I was just wondering, Peter, have, have you consulted with the people who live near the Chevy Chase Playground?
I have consulted with some of them, but I, in full disclosure, I mean, many of the people I've been talking to are people who are already trying to get the other lights turned on. So the, the lights for the pickleball, tennis and basketball courts. So you, you could argue it's a, a, a bad sample.
But the people who you did talk to want the, would they want to play pickleball till 10 o'clock at night? Is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, with the other lights, yeah. Well, they want them on at all. I mean, that's been a it's been a whole drama unto itself, but yeah, they do.
Trying to imagine people trying to sleep with the sound of pickleball. Pickleball's whopping continually until 10 o'clock at night, so. Okay, is there some reason why we can't consult the neighbors, more of the neighbors about this?
Other than the fact that we have our lives and I have not been able to get the time to do it.
Thanks.
Commissioner Finacy, then Grunwall.
Yeah, I think there are kind of two extenuating circumstances here. One is that when DGS started working on the field, they did it with absolutely no notice to the community. Lafayette had already permitted, I mean, Cap City had already permitted and paid for the fall permits to the Lafayette Field. And then they had to go back and file like special, like new appeals process and try to scramble to find extra fields. So they're really kind of behind the eight ball through no part of their own. So that's one thing. The other thing, it's really a short term extension because I think after this fall, the field should be back online and then the lights should be able to go off at the normal time again. So it's not a permanent extension, I think.
Commissioner Grunwall?
Yeah, I was just curious as to how many houses are immediately adjacent to the field? Does anybody know? Because
On third, on, on Livingston, across from the ball field, there are the new, I think yet to be occupied, senior affordable housing. And then there are houses at the end of 42nd, one, two, three, three houses. And then beyond the outfield and beyond the, the border area and beyond Western Avenue and beyond the median strip are the houses in, must be about five houses in Maryland, in, you know, in Chevy Chase, Maryland.
Yeah, it just, how, how soon, how soon is this light change needed? I mean, is this
They're playing game, they're playing games until nine, nine fifteen right now. What they want to do is rejigger their schedule so they can get two games in during the summer. And then, as Laura says, in the fall, I mean, I guess I don't know what their schedule is. But the, the fields are lit right now.
It usually goes until about November.
What?
Until about November, I think that's maybe when they, the end of the field construction date at this point. And that's also about when Cap City finishes and around November.
Does this answer your questions, Carol?
I guess I'm just concerned, you know, for the neighbors. I don't really
As there's so many issues that come before us, there's a trade-off here. And as Laura has said, there are some real extenuating And as Laura, as Laura has said, there are some real extenuating circumstances. Um, and um, so I, I, I think uh, in making the trade-off, we ought to, we ought to go with uh, Cap City's request.
Um, Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, Peter, I am generally supportive of this. I have a constituent, Luke Harding, who's one of the principals with Cap City Little League. He's a coach and I, I talk to him frequently about all kinds of athletic things. And I, seeing this on the agenda, I sent him an email and asked him about this. And he was glad to see, he wasn't aware that we would be looking at this, but he was glad to see that we would be supportive. But he did mention something about Cap City Little League having a board meeting on Wednesday where they were going to be talking about, he was gonna take it to them and talk about it. I, I don't know if that's part of your understanding, if there's something internal they're doing as to whether or not uh, they need this, I don't know.
Although all of my uh, contact has been, has been with Mark Wellborn, who uh, is the Cap City Little League Fields Coordinator for the whole area. I mean, I guess for all of Cap Cities. So this to be a, an official uh, request from Cap Cities. Um, he has, they have made an official request to um, the Parks and Recreation and um, DGS, the General Services, to, to extend the, the lights.
Okay, so maybe Luke just isn't uh, aware of that part of it. Uh, but again, I, with respect to what other commissioner said about the neighbors, lights on until ten o'clock could drive some people crazy. Um, you know, it's an issue and I, I understand the trade-off. I'm generally supportive.
Commissioner Nagy?
Thank you. Um, so with respect to what Commissioner Sherman just said, I mean, if you have a child that's trying to sleep at ten o'clock at night, the sound of pickleball and baseball is, is a lot. So I, I would love to know whether we have families with small children, small enough to be in bed by ten o'clock.
Liz, could I just clarify? What I'm asking for now is support just for the Cap Cities thing.
I know. I, I understand.
I may come back to you and I tell you now that you've asked this question, um, my God, maybe I'll do a survey. Uh, but uh, I'll probably just door knock. Um, uh.
Do have another question when you're done.
Okay, but, but does that address the, the first issue you raised, the pickleball noise?
I, I wasn't actually just addressing pickleball noise. I mean, bats make noise too, when you whack a baseball. Um, but the other question that I have is, um, in this letter that you're proposing, is it time limited? And are we giving our approval just until November of this year? Because that would make a difference to me.
Okay, I'd be happy to include that.
Okay, because I'd like to revisit this and see how it goes with the neighbors. And, um, and, and in fact, by the time this, by the time November rolls around, there should be seniors living in the senior housing right there at Listner. So it will have an effect on them as well. So thank you.
Um, so I just will say, commissioners, that um, I'm supportive of it. Um, anything that keeps our kids occupied, out of trouble and in a safe space, I'm going to support. Um, I'm a tennis player myself. Um, played tennis pretty much all through high school. I didn't play on the college team, but I played in, well, well into adulthood and still play. Um, and I would often, often grab a court um, down at Candy King City. And usually I did not come out and start playing until night. I'm a nighttime tennis player. Um, so I understand that um, that they're gonna be trade-offs with the neighbors. But you know, I, I think with a lot of things that we experience in this city, especially when it comes to our juveniles, um, I'm always gonna weigh on what, what's best for them. Um, and if they can uh, have more playing time out there uh, and have safe space, I'm gonna weigh heavily on that. Um, I do think it's a good idea to reassess it and you know, see what the neighbors are seeing at a certain point in time, but um, I think this is a good thing. Thanks, Commissioner Goslin, for bringing it up. Commissioner Grunwald, then Sherman.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good thing for the kids. I'm not so sure it's good for the neighbors. And I would feel a lot more comfortable asking the neighbors what they, what they think. I mean, uh, if we just pass this as Peter's requesting, um, then we're basically just going to, I guess, wait for complaints to arrive from neighbors. And I'm not quite sure that's really the right way to go about it. If I were one of the neighbors, I would like to have been consulted. So um, although I do feel it's good for kids, I do have my concerns about the neighbors and, and that's where my sympathies lie at this point. Thank you.
And Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, I just would second that in the sense that I, I said I'm generally supportive, but I, I think it would be a good idea, Peter, if there's a chance to check in with the neighbors as opposed to doing it and then hearing the complaints after the fact, if there happened to be any complaints. Nine fifteen is already somewhat late, going to ten o'clock is particularly late. Um, that said, I walk by that field almost every single day, uh, on a long walk I do. And I know the, the homes, I know the new development at uh, uh, the Listner. Um, and there are from Western over to Thirty-first Street, uh, not counting the cul-de-sac, a couple of homes that are across the street from the park. On the western side, there are no homes, right? On the sort of northern side, it's kind of far, um, the neighbors there. But anyway, there would probably be, I don't know, maybe a half dozen to a dozen homes or neighbors to check in with. That's my guess. Um, so anyway, just um.
Well, I'll tell you what, um, uh, I, I would be happy, I, I, I hope that we, if you pass this tonight. Uh, but I'd be happy to make it provisional on my walking around after I get back tomorrow night. I mean, I won't walk around tomorrow night, so it would be Wednesday I'll walk around and I will knock on every door of an immediately adjacent neighbor. And I will report back to the commission uh, in September. Uh, so we will have, we will have started that um, colloquy. Uh, but I, I just remind um, the commissioners that these neighbors have been living with this field for a very long time. And there has been, it is, this is not, uh, this is not a, 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 an issue of, of first impression, right? I mean, there, there's been a, the, the issue of when lights are on, um, I mean, I don't know if uh, ten o'clock is a sort of new terrain. But it's, this is not new. Uh, neighbors are well aware. You, as you drive by on Livingston, you will often see that somebody puts out a barrier, a sign saying, don't, you know, don't, Little Leaguers, don't park on uh, uh, don't park on the cul-de-sac. I mean, so there, there is a, there is a certain balance there that um, that uh, they're used to having that Little League field there. Um, and so, so I, I, I mean, I, you know, if there's, and I, I'm almost certain I'm not going to find, um, you know, uh, deep uh, opposition. But um, if there is deep opposition, I'd be happy to, to report back to you.
Commissioner Nagy?
So just so I understand, because I'm not sure that I do, we're not going to agree tonight to extend the lights? You're gonna wait until September?
No, I don't think that's a wise decision. I think.
Then I misunderstand. So.
What we should do is, uh, what we should do is we should approve this. I will, I will um, uh, go around and on Wednesday and knock on doors. Uh, I will report back to the, if there is uh, opposition, um, I will report that to the commission in September and we can revisit the issue. But I, I mean, I do think that, um, as with the last issue, you know, there, there's the planning involved. I mean, they, they've asked for our support, uh, and, um, and there are extenuating circumstances. So I hope that we approve this uh, 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 letter uh, this evening.
And Commissioner Finacy?
Yeah, I think, I think giving um, information to the neighbors about why and about the limited duration would be really important. I put in the chat, like, I live right across from the Lafayette Field and we have had so many construction projects. I mean, if I add them up, it's probably six years of construction. And while the lights are on until ten, there is no construction noise. And if we say, you know, this is a one-time exception because of the way these, you know, the Lafayette Field was really screwed up and the way they announced it and didn't give lot, you know, other fields online a chance. I think uh, it might be okay, but I wouldn't want to set a precedent for other residential areas.
Okay, well, with that, um, I think rather than, um, beat it dead hard, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, in the chat, I, I wanted to mention that in the chat, there are a few comments about how, one of the comments uh, is from Christopher Vaden about how this used to be part of three E and has anyone talked to?
Tom Quinn.
Tom Quinn, thank you. Yes, I was getting there. Thanks, Tom Quinn about it. Um, and then from Dottie Brady, the lights were very controversial. I do not know how the neighbors are going to feel about lights on until ten. Um, and then another question about timers. I think that's Laura's comment, actually. So I, I, I don't think this is as uncontroversial as, as we think it is.
Well, let's see. I mean, uh, I, I, I would like to press for a vote here. Um, uh, with the promise that I will door knock on Wednesday and we can revisit in September. Um, I think that the reality of this is, yeah, given my experience with this other issue that I'm not um, asking for any, anything from the full commission for, is that, um, at least now I'm not asking, is that um, DGS and DPR will take their blessed time about doing what they do. Um, uh, which is as, uh, kind of interesting, given the, they've rewired the, all these lights so that they can be centrally controlled from uh, from headquarters. And so that, uh, making a, if, if we add, if we find there's great opposition, they can change it back. And, and we can influence the, the agencies, they can change it back quickly. So I, I would press for a vote tonight. Um, and I think we've aired this, well, all right, uh, Commissioner Simmons.
Let me go as Commissioner Simmons. Um, then Commissioner Nagy, you have your hand up again, and then we should.
I do.
Um, I just wanted to add, ask Commissioner Goslin if, um, in his call to vote, if he will add that he will door knock as well as leave notices to residents as Commissioner Finacy mentioned about that is temporary and unusual circumstances. Just so they know that this is something temporary, so that the Little League can, you know, continue. And after that, it'll be back to the regular hours.
I will both, I will both do the door knocking, do the notice, and I will put it in the letter that we're doing it. Does that satisfy?
Almost. 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 I'd like to see a date certain by which this, the lights would stop. And I don't honestly think we ought to wait until September to get back information about what the neighbors have to say.
Pass it to you as soon as I get it. I mean, I, I think if we were to revive, reverse course, um, we need to do it at a meeting, I think. Um, so.
But we can know what the neighbors say before that.
Let me, on an issue of a date certain, Laura, do you have, do you know what their timetable is for the fall?
Um, no, but I'll, I'm gonna go look on there, see if they have a website right now. Um, but usually they start, are like, uh, like All-Stars would be happening right now. And so they would be wrapping up their summer season. Um, let me see their calendar, give me a second. But usually it starts in the, like, when school starts. So let's see, fall season, uh, draft is early September, early to mid-September, team roster sched- schedules shared. Mid-September, games and practices begin. So what date is our meeting in September?
September eighth.
A September eighth. So I think if you are able to get information from the residents to inform that, um, we could have, you could have a letter ready to go. And if, you know, it was, but then I think we could vote on it very quickly and just say, we're just gonna vote on it officially at our September meeting.
Laura, are there not games? I mean, my understanding from Wellborn is that there are games, uh, and it's really unfortunate he couldn't come. But my understanding is there are games this summer too, right? I mean, that's.
They may be doing All-Stars or something that's not on the fall calendar. Fall calendar, it starts mid-September. But I would, you might need to reach back out to Mark.
But also, Peter, I, when I spoke to Luke Harding, again, a Cap City Little League coach, he just finished the All-Star game. They came in second place. Um, so if that marks the end of their season with an All-Star game, then perhaps during this rest of the season, there isn't even a scheduled games. I don't know for sure.
Let me, let me just say, uh, I am working with information from, you know, the Fields Coordinator for
Uh, I know.
For, for, for Cap Cities. Um, uh, I, my understanding was he made this request and he made it in a, no, he made this request, I know. He made it an immediate request, um, that these lights be changed now. I assume that means because they're using the field now. Um, uh, and so I am, I, I've tried to offer a variety of ways to address the concerns that Liz has raised and Carol has raised. Um, I, I don't think it's, I, I think we need to conceive of this as dealing with a neighborhood that's dealt with these fields for a long time and with lights for a long time. Now, I, you know, I, so I don't think there's a great danger with passing this, having whatever little result, uh, uh, influence we have, have, have it between now and September. And I will report immediately once I have all this uh, this uh, uh, door knocking information um, back to you. But if we need to revisit the issue, then we revisit it. But I don't, I don't see a need why, why we need to wait until September for, I mean, Laura is looking at and talking about a, a, a fall schedule. But um, but um, Wellborn said he needs, he's seeking and uh, the light change now, the extension now. So I, I would, I'd advocate of voting for this now.
Let me go to Commissioner Grunwald. And commissioners, we got about five minutes left on topic.
So, so what happens if we, we, we vote against this tonight? There's a Little League uh, game that can't take place? Is that it each night?
Uh, I, you know what, Carol, I don't know.
Let me ask you also, uh, what if we approved it for one month, for the month of August? And then you would have time to talk to the neighbors and we could, we could reinstate it on September eighth at our, at September eighth meeting? If, if all, if all the neighbors agreed that this was not a problem for them?
Well, you know, to try to get this support, um, I will, I'm happy to do that. Um, uh, you know. Let's just, um, Greta, do you have something to add and then?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest we take the vote, but for these Little Leagues, certain Little Leagues have certain fields that's designated where they play at. So if Lafayette Field isn't available, say, I think it's like six of them in a league and they play at certain fields. If they don't have a place to play, since Lafayette isn't available, then the kids don't play. And that league is like four hundred dollars for your kids. So I would be really pissed off. That's why my son don't do it no more. But, um, so they'd be really upset if they can't, you know, their, their kids can't play. Like, these kids are getting really, they're really involved with Lafayette team, like the one over here, they're really good. So, um, and I think the, and I think the happy medium is to have more, the games at this field to accommodate the season. And I believe the upcoming season ends a couple of weeks before Thanksgiving in November. And I think it starts around, um, when school starts in August. That's when they start recruiting.
Okay, so let me suggest, let me suggest, we need to move on to other issues. And so my suggestion is I will, I will cede and say, ask that we uh, approve, uh, we support Cap City's request to Department of Parks and Recreation and Department of General Services for an extension of the lights that, at night from nine fifteen until ten. Uh, between now and our September, Lisa, what is our first meeting?
September eighth.
And our first September meeting with the, uh, and, and in addition, I pledge to survey all of the immediate, the adjacent uh, residents and provide information about the request and um, uh, on a more extended basis. But the fact that it is uh, that it is uh, only until November, if we approve it for the, the extended period beyond September. Does that, would that satisfy folks?
Peter, I think it may and it may not. Uh, I call for the vote. Um, so at this point, um, if, if that's a motion that you're putting on the floor.
Motion, it's a motion I'm putting on the floor, yep.
Okay, uh, I second.
Peter, can you just, oh great, can you just repeat that, though, just in terms of what the conditionality is of it?
ANC three four G supports the request by Cap City Little League to DPR and DGS. We're extending the hours of the lights from nine to ten, from nine fifteen to 10 o'clock. Until our next meeting, September eighth. Commissioner Goslin commits to speak to all of the immediate neighbors. This week and report back to the commission on their reaction to this. And as part of that contact, we'll provide them with information about the, how long the lights would stay on if if. If the Cap Cities gets their full request.
Right. And Peter, just so that I'm clear, are we conditioning this on on the neighbors? General support, not necessarily unanimous, but their general support. What if they push back and say we don't like it?
And just a point of order, I've called for the vote, Commissioner, that that ends discussion and vote is taken. But Commissioner Goslin, please answer that question.
I think my my understanding, I think, I think the reality is that this is not a. A big issue and that we can safely do it for one month. So that, no, I'm not, I'm not putting in a breaker switch in this, this that would, you know. If the neighbors are terribly upset that that we'll, we'll, I mean, we can't, we either are going to do this for some period of time or not. I'm trying to satisfy the concerns of some of my fellow commissioners by by time limiting it. But that seems to, I think it's a safe thing to do and I hope we do it.
Commissioners, all those in favor show by raising your hand. Seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. And so we'll go on to Commissioner Simmons right now, if you can do.
Yes, I'll start the timer. I'll quit. So currently we have an unhoused person that lives at, well, that's at the Civic Core site. Secondly, I have been trying to do neighborhood cleanups. It's been a little too hot now, but I was out there this past Saturday. And I wanted to call a vote to the commission that we look into purchasing our own trash pickers. For neighborhood cleanups. It was just coincide with what Owen suggested today, but what I've been doing for the neighborhood pickups is working with. A resident in my single member district who works for the Department of Energy and I ask her to bring home pickers for me to use. And I believe it's just becoming a little burdensome because she has to carry those on public transportation from work. And it's from her job. So I'm asking, so I propose or. You know, before we do any discussion, my basic request of the ANC is for us to purchase our own trash pickers. And utilize those throughout the commission for neighborhood cleanups. I learned that even cigarette butts is a point of litter that needs to be picked up. Lisa?
Yep, Commissioner Simmons, how much are the trash pickers and how many are you requesting the ANC purchase?
So they vary in. Price and in just working with the resident that lives in the single member district, she suggests that we get. The better quality ones of them and I was looking to get at most ten. I have reached out to Department of Public Works because they have the neighborhood cleanups. If and you reach out to them 10 days in advance, they don't provide pickers. And then as Owen mentioned about his program. They give pickers, but we got to do it in two weeks advance notice. So like this past weekend, I did it on Sunday or was it Saturday? Saturday morning, just to pick up the trash, especially along Connecticut Avenue.
And are you also asking? Or what is your position on other supplies? So like if we wanted to stop by and grab a picker. I'm assuming we we like gloves and trash bags. So like just general supply.
So that's a good point because when I pick up, I don't use gloves, but I just, I get use my own trash bags and just use the picker. So I would be requesting about 10. Pickers, the goal for me, though, is to keep these pickers in the ANC office so that if people want to get them, they can go get them on their own. I don't want to be the gatekeeper of them. Since you brought that up, maybe getting some heavy duty gloves. And maybe trash bags and all this stuff can be kept in the ANC office. But I think where Commissioner Goslin and I, we want to make sure that our areas along Connecticut Avenue by the businesses. Are cleaned and I've already reached out to DPR and DGS. In asking them to make sure that they're cleaning up the trash cans more frequently now, especially because of that. So I see Lee Mayor put a comment, some of the the better trash pickers can range more than $10. If you haven't used them, the cheaper ones, I feel like I'm going to get arthritis from my hands and working with those. So I would err on the side of the more quality ones, which can go up to $50 versus the cheaper ones. Commissioner Nagy, where are you done, Commissioner Laura?
Just one last comment, if we, because I just cleaned up the ANC office. I spent hours in there and there is all kinds of, I won't even go into what I found, but it is very dirty. But if we could get somewhere, the only thing I'm concerned about is cross contamination and just making sure if we do use them. There's a way to sanitize it before we bring it back into the office. Because that is where like I've used it to work in. I know Commissioner Goslin has used it to work in. You know, we had a secretary at one point that that is their home base. That office as clean as possible. So after use, so we might need to add, I would say, some type of sanitation process. Before we bring them back into the office.
Yeah, so I can commit, I don't know if other commissioners are going to do that, but I'm very big on keeping things sanitary. So can spray it down with some bleach, keep it in a bag and inside a box so that is off to the side. I wouldn't just throw it on a desk or something. Because I think I picked up some poop paper this past weekend and I was like, oh, so I understand that. So I wouldn't. I wouldn't want to, you know, compromise where someone is working. I haven't been in the ANC office. I don't know if we have a closet. But I would definitely keep them in a bag. With the dirty ends toward the bottom. So you wouldn't be reaching in there, touching the top.
Commissioner Nagy?
So in total, what what's your financial ask for the ANC?
So then if we include, I guess we could start with some trash bags. Heavy duty trash bags, gloves, maybe five sets of gloves, and I don't know.
If you have 10 pickers, you're going to want 10 pairs of gloves, no?
Yeah. So what I was about to say is I don't know if I want to get like those thick gloves that people use in their garden. Or if we just want those like disposable gloves that you get out. But I guess I'll look into it, but I don't want to spend no more than $1,000.
Seems like a lot actually to me. If the pickers are $500, then the other 500 seems like a lot.
Dishwashing gloves. Oh, good idea. Yeah. So I said at most. So I said I wouldn't want to spend over $1,000. I'm not saying I want to spend $1,000.
Okay, but I won't vote for $1,000. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, what what budget would you like?
I I think you ought to be able to do it on 750 and if you need more, then you can come back.
That's fine. That's fine.
Awesome.
Commissioner Finacy?
One, one thing that I have had great luck with and you might want to try it is sometimes people have extra items at their house on the listserv. Sometimes you ask for like, hey, does anybody have a picker or grabber they no longer want and you get it for free? Sometimes people are cleaning out, so we could try that too.
That's a good idea.
Any other questions, Commissioner, for Commissioner Simmons, before we? Ask for a vote or Commissioner Simmons, would you go on and put your motion on the floor?
Yeah, just to add. Commissioner, just to respond to Ronald Khan. The OANC, we, the OANC gives us money for us to utilize. They give us money for us to use for things like this. So that's these, this would be one of the items that we would use our OANC funds for. So. So my motion was to request for the ANC to purchase supplies for neighborhood cleanups such as. Trash pickers, gloves and trash bags with a budget of at most 750. And I know there was a suggestion.
Let me go in in the discussion portion, let me go to Commissioner Sherman, then Grunwald.
Yeah, I was just acknowledging that there were some questions, I think, in the chat that had to do with. Sort of the program that this supports. Commissioner Simmons, you might want to just. Go back and just start kind of articulate what this effort is about, just quickly for people who might not have.
This effort is to ensure that we keep Connecticut Avenue and the Civic Core clean. We have an unhoused person there and the trash has been accumulating a lot. I've been asking BGS to pick it up. I've been picking up trash, so I don't want to consistently ask the resident in my single member district to bring her pickers from home. So if we have our own pickers for our ANC, we can pick up the trash as needed, especially. At the Civic Core site and at the Lafayette Pointer site, we can just pick up trash and we have them fit. Yeah.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah, at the very start of this meeting, our Moker Owen Cox was telling us about this new program they started. In which all these supplies would be given to us free. So I'm not quite sure why we need to buy all these things. Why don't we take advantage of their free program?
So I don't know if you remember when I asked Moker Owen about the pickers. He mentioned that these pickers are used across the entire city. So I am requesting for our ANC to have our own pickers to pick trash in our neighborhoods. At wheel rather than scheduling two weeks or once a quarter. As I mentioned, we have a lot of trash accumulating at the Civic Core site. I need pickers to pick those up.
And I I'll just piggyback off of that there because I was involved in the Facebook discussion about the Civic Core site. And it was, it was a hefty discussion about the accumulated trash over there. I added in that the work that I've been trying to do primarily in Ward Four, but also at the Civic Core site and the library on rodent. Infestation and one of the things that attracts rodents is trash. But I think one of the differences, Commissioner Grunwald, is what Commissioner Simmons is trying to do is to give us that. Ad hoc ability to go in and grab a trash bag because honestly, based on the Facebook conversation, I, if I was in town, I would have went over there that night. A lot of people were very concerned about the trash and the way the cities program work, as Commissioner Simmons has stated. The program that Colin mentioned is a quarterly program that you have have to have a two week advance notice to do. This will allow us to go into the office, get the supplies, go over there and clean it up in lieu of waiting for the city to do something. So I think that's the difference and I'm very supportive of that. Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah, just a quick question. Is there something going on that we don't know about that we are accumulating? An unusual amount of trash at the Civic Core site?
As I mentioned early, we have an unhoused person living at the Civic Core site. So the trash is accumulating, they're reading newspapers, the trash cans are getting filled faster than the city can remove them. We have requested for the city to go through their process to clear out a site that has. Become an unhoused site. So their response to that isn't quick. You have to give notice. I spoke to the person that's staying there. I don't know they have the capacity to. They don't have anywhere to go and they've asked me when is the trash going to get picked up? I have alerted all our government agencies to clean this, but if someone is filling the trash can as soon as it's empty. Then and then the trash is blowing everywhere. I went at eight o'clock on Sunday, picked up the trash. It's more trash. So. That's what the problem is. But and when I asked the guy that's unhoused, if he needs housing, he said he does. So if anybody out there has any help or resources to help someone who is unhoused, we have someone.
And this is, you know, this. I guess the newest. Issue is the unhoused person, but there has been, I've observed and taken pictures of the trash accumulation there. Probably going back to over a year ago. And particular what I have been paying attention to is the rodent activity. And it's bad. I mean, if in, so when we were meeting in person, I would stay behind and I would watch it. So we've been having issues with that, but I I think this whole collective effort is going to help. But that rodent activity is going to get a lot worse if we don't, you know, get a handle on this. So this is one way to do that. Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, I I support this. At the same time, I support our commission. Drafting, passing a resolution, calling on the city to to do more. Because I I do respect the concerns of neighbors who have said, why isn't the city doing what I and I take Commissioner Simmons. Comments to heart that she's petitioned the city to do this and I deal with the city as we all do all the time and we know some of the difficulties in getting them to respond. At the same time, our collective waiting, passing a resolution at some point soon, saying to DGS, you need to be taking care of this. We're chipping in, we're doing our thing, but you guys need to get on the ball.
And I understand that. I'm just trying to be, understand that our neighborhood isn't the only city, isn't the only neighborhood in the city. So when I ask the city to do something, I'm not expecting them to do it overnight. So I've alerted, they are aware of it, they're going to do it, but what I'm hoping everyone understands is. Once it's cleaned up, it's going to get back dirty. And the city isn't just going to stay in our. At the Civic Core site and pick up trash. I've asked DPR if they can have their staff pick up trash a couple of times a week. I'm a public servant. I'm okay with picking up trash, getting up at eight o'clock, letting my son ride his bike over there while people are playing pickleball. This is helping our neighborhood be better. This is what makes our neighborhood beautiful, not apartment buildings, but making sure our neighborhood is clean. So I only wanted three minutes. I don't know what, I don't know what, you know, why this is like. An issue. We've spent money on services that we haven't even used. All I'm asking for is this trash to pick it up, pickers to pick up trash and have it available so everybody can do that if they would like to. I don't understand why it's.
Commissioner Goslin and then I think Commissioner Simmons, you should call.
Let me just say, I absolutely support this. I do think that Bruce is right that we do need a resolution. On the on the west side of Connecticut, those trash cans are just not, they're not cleared enough times. They're just not. I mean, it's coming, but you know, the notion that we just throw up our hands and pass resolutions and not do self-help too. It's crazy, you know, and so I think Corinthia's idea is great and I'm I'm getting second in line to use. To use those pickers and as I say, I'm going to try to work with Steve Connors and with fellow gardeners, I'll put a request out. On the listserv for people to join us and trying to clean up the 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 tree boxes too, a separate issue. But I support this very strongly.
Commissioner Simmons has already made her motion and it's already been properly seconded. So Commissioners, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven zero. Great. And Commissioner Simmons, I would be happy to help you co-sponsor a resolution on this to add in the rodent issues. I said in the Facebook group, I took the New York City Rat Academy class. That's how dedicated I've been in trying to work through this issue. It's it's a big problem in some parts of our ward in terms of four. And it's a big problem on the three side on the avenue, both sides. I think, Peter, you're right. Trash and uncollected refuse causes a lot of that and we we need the city to do better on that. So thank you. Did you want to add some, Commissioner Simmons?
Yes, and I was just gonna make one comment. Yes, and I was just going to make one comment. Um, I didn't offer the right, I wasn't volunteering to, but if anybody else would like to do that, go ahead. I just want to pick up the trash.
Okay, I'll do it. I'll take it up for sure.
You saw, I'll, I'll work with you on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
You're very welcome.
All right. So next on the agenda is, um, Commissioner Sherman, discussion and possible vote on a resolution on public use of the Maray fields, um, community hours and safety guidelines during hot weather.
Right. So this is about safety guidelines, not the community hours per se. Um, I put the, a link to the resolution in the chat. And it really is a fairly straightforward proposition that we are mindful that surface temperatures on artificial turf can get very hot with hot weather. Um, thirty-five to fifty-five degrees hotter than ambient air temperature. And as a consequence, municipalities, Montgomery County, DC, uh, municipalities all over the country have, uh, guidelines for, uh, play on artificial turf fields during hot weather. Um, I know Trey Holloway is on the call, and I welcome him to come into this conversation. He and I had a discussion about guidelines that Maray has for use of their fields in Woodley Park and at Jelliffe. And he mentioned they don't have any set guidelines that for their athletic programs. And Trey, please correct me if I'm misremembering what you said, that the athletic director has discretion. In this particular case, to be very clear, uh, the resolution is not addressing Maray's private use of the fields. It's only addressing the community use. Maray has discretion, obviously, over its use of the fields for athletic, for its athletic programs and other recreational purposes. But there are community hours, and there are community hours, uh, projected for the summertime, uh, from eight AM until dusk on weekends. Um, and as we know, temperatures in Washington get very hot in July and August. In fact, we're in the middle of a heat advisory right now, and on Wednesday, the temperature is, uh, forecast to be as high as ninety-five. And when it's ninety-five degrees, the fields could be as, as hot as one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty degrees. So this is about the ANC and Maray joining together in discussion with the community. It doesn't prescribe any guidelines. It simply calls for developing them, uh, as an alert to, uh, members of the community. I've shared the resolution with the Commissioners. I've detailed the rationale in the resolution. Again, it's in the chat for community members to see. Um, and I'm happy to take questions or comments. And Trey, I welcome you or anyone else. Carolyn Law, I understand, is also on the call to come into the conversation and offer comments from Maray.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi, yes, I have a couple of questions. One, why is this resolution only targeted to Maray and not to St. John's or Blessed Sacrament? My second question is, why are we, it, it feels a little bit targeted towards Maray? Um, if we really feel that it's a concern and safety issue, why are we not lobbying to the city to have this an issue for the entire city instead of just Maray? And then the third thing is, it feels that parents, you know, it feels a little bit of, um, policing residents, you know, as a parent, I should know if the turf is hot, and if I don't know the turf is hot, I'm going to learn that. So it just feels a little bit, um, of policing parents, and those are my comments.
So in, in response to your first question, uh, why not St. John's and Blessed Sacrament? Um, to my knowledge, they don't have community hours. They're private institutions, and they are, um, responsible for the use of their fields, as I've already indicated, Maray would be in the case of its own private use. With respect to DC, I've indicated in the resolution that DC does have guidelines, but they're very generic. They say that during hot weather between ten AM and two PM, um, exercise caution. But there's nothing specific about temperature thresholds, and those guidelines, um, quite frankly, aren't, aren't satisfactory. Montgomery County, on the other hand, does have, uh, more precise guidelines. I put those in the resolution. Um, with respect to, um, policing, it's simply understanding that there is a public safety issue here, and that we as, uh, a commission recognizing community use hours for the field, um, I believe bear responsibility at a minimum to advise, uh, members of the community, particularly parents of small children, about elevated temperatures on artificial turf fields when there's hot weather. Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I would be happy, uh, to work with you, uh, to push for improvement of the district's, uh, guidelines, perhaps modeling them on Montgomery County. Um, in fact, many of the schools that have turf at least sometimes allow public use. So that the notion of aiming this just at Maray seems unfair. Uh, of course, you've heard this from me before, but I think Maray has been a good partner with this community for the whole four years they've been trying to develop this field. Um, and I think that, uh, if, uh, that, you know, we ought to leave it to the wisdom of Maray and of the parents, uh, if we're, if, about how to use that field. I frankly, if, uh, if, uh, I don't know how Maray feels about this, but it seems like this is, we're, we're trying to either further regulate them. And if it is because of the public use portion, perhaps they should consider not offering public use. Um, uh, but in any case, it, it seems like an issue that crosses all of the turf fields, and we ought to treat it that way.
That's a, a good point. The, the issue there, as I think you probably know, is that the District of Columbia issues regulations or guidelines for public fields, not private. So to appeal to the district to enact guidelines for private athletic sports fields that have artificial turf would probably be a non-starter. Uh, with respect to singling out Maray again, Maray is in our ANC, Maray is in my single-member district. We have jurisdiction here over our ANC. We don't have jurisdiction over the city. But I did indicate in the resolution that based on our experience, I've addressed this point in the resolution. If we were to, um, adopt guidelines for community use of these fields during hot weather, um, that language we could indeed provide to the city to consider adopting for public fields even, that it would be more specific given temperature thresholds.
Well, another way to make it more general than just Maray would be for us to adopt guidelines that we address to our residents and say, you should be concerned about this, and you should be concerned about it particularly in these times, and let them decide. Um, uh, it does seem to me that, uh, if, if, I mean, I take it that the reason why the district only regulates public fields is that they feel that's as far as their reach goes. Is that true?
Well, I think that's probably a fair statement, which is why I've.
I are reach greater. I mean, why, why would I be greater?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, Peter. Why would what?
I would, uh, why would our reach be greater, uh, uh, um, uh, than that?
Because we have community use and we're responsible to, uh, safeguard the health and well-being of our residents.
Okay, but we can do that by addressing, um, uh, uh, regulations or advisories to our residents.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I, again, the resolution does not stipulate specific guidelines. It simply says that we will join with Maray in discussion with the community and establish guidelines. What they look like, obviously, is subject to those discussions.
Okay, I'd just say, why do we, why are we doing it in relationship to Maray? Why not in relationship to all of the turf fields in our community?
They don't have community use hours, Peter. Um, that's the point. That's, it's, it's limited because of this particular circumstance.
I think in fact, there, there, there are private fields that are used, let's, occasionally by, by the public. I, Blessed Sacrament being an example. Um, oh, I do think, you know, finding a way to address these issues and these concerns across our neighborhood. And without, um, going beyond our authority, apparently authority that the city doesn't think it has, um, seems like the right way to go.
Okay, Laura?
It's actually next.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Gore, sorry. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I definitely kind of agree with, um, Commissioner Goslin. One of the things that I wanted to also add here was, um, and Liz, you had mentioned about the timing of my resolution, which was submitted seven days in advance. This resolution was not submitted to the community or the commission seven days in advance. And I've had at least one constituent reach out to me, um, with that. I definitely, this is, this has been an issue, and I, um, had a conversation with Commissioner Finacy earlier today that I've had several people in my commission area mention, um, in terms of their viewpoint and feeling like their viewpoint is not heard on this issue. So I'm not comfortable with supporting a resolution, um, that has come out at the ninth hour to the ANC and the community. Um, most of our community and the ANC, as a matter of fact, are on vacation. Um, so I don't think there's been an opportunity for discussion here. Um, and especially not my SMD, um, and I know I'm the furthest out. But, um, in my walking and door knocking with neighbors, this, um, Maray field has come up. And I've had definitely community members very vocally, um, you know, talk about, um, their disagreements with the ANC's direction on this. So I, I just don't feel like, um, I can vote on it without input, further input from my constituents. And I do not agree with, um, the resolutions continuing to come out, you know, um, past our seven-day notice. We've said that for a reason. So I think it's really important to do that so that you have maximum feedback on issues like this. Um, and I agree with Commissioner Goslin. Um, I understand that the city does not, um, you know, regulate private fields, but I do think there's room for us to weigh that with the city. Um, and the other thing that makes me frankly very uncomfortable about the resolution is we have not had one conversation with Maray that I'm aware of. Now, maybe you've had conversations with Maray, but, um, it seems to me a little backwards that we're doing the resolution without the input from Maray. I would rather, um, present the community a resolution that the, um, community, ANC, and Maray has worked on, um, and agreed to, as opposed to, you know, this initial step. So I'm curious, and I'm, I'm very interested to hear from Maray on this discussion.
Right. So as I have said, um, and as the resolution note, notes, uh, I have talked to Trey Holloway about this. Uh, I have asked him about guidelines. I've reported that. It's not that there hasn't been conversation with Maray. And let me just reiterate that all the resolution calls on the ANC and Maray to do is precisely, Commissioner Gore, what you're asking for, which is to come together, discuss potential guidelines in partnership with the community. That's exactly what it says. That's all it says. It doesn't prescribe guidelines. It doesn't lay down guidelines and that, that sort of thing, to be clear.
It says it with a twist, with all due respect. I mean, it's not.
Twist. I'm, I'm sorry. I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, there's, if, if, if that's all that the resolution would say, you can say that in a paragraph. The resolution goes into some detail on, on certain areas. Um, and I don't know if Maray, um, is in agreement with that. And in terms of the efficiency of the ANC, what I am saying is, those could have been discussions, and, and that could have been something that we brought to the community as a joint-done project. Not necessarily done, but a joint discussion. We're not. We're bringing a resolution where we are saying multiple things within the resolution in addition to the ask. Um, so I'm just saying, in terms of my opinion, uh, that's pretty much where I stand. And I, I want to hear the conversation with Maray. I mean, you've had the opportunity to do that. I don't know what Maray said. I don't know what, um, their position is on that. And I certainly want to know that before I vote or put anything in the resolution regarding this.
Commissioner Finacy?
Hi, um, I'm going to try to share my screen if I could. Um, you know, I've been concerned about artificial turf for a long time and have been a big supporter of grass at Lafayette Field. And I am concerned about the heat island effects. But I, I think that, like, to, uh, Commissioner Simmons' point and to Commissioner Goslin's point, um, looking at the city's kind of take on this might be really important. Let's see if I can get my other window up here. Let's see. I think it's this one. All right. I'm not sure if it's going to show. I'm on my Chromebook, not on my other one. But basically, um, when I did, uh, pull together a memo for the meeting with the mayor on May first that Commissioner Gore and I had about the Lafayette Field, we looked at the heat on artificial turf. And, you know, all of your facts about the amount of heat generated there and how much higher, ev- everything is great. What, what I'm concerned about is that DC used to, um, show heat warnings. I, there are heat warnings you can find on Twitter. You can find it on DPR alerts, um, DGS websites, heat advisories. They used to say them. You know, stay to, uh, limit use of fields from ten AM to two PM. There's one from twenty nineteen. Um, be, take precautions when using recreational surfaces, including synthetic turf fields. That's twenty nine, uh, twenty twenty, um, twenty twenty-two similarly. But what happened is when they stopped doing grass fields in twenty twenty-two, installing new grass fields, they stopped the public health warnings. And it was almost like, we think turf fields are the way to go, so we're going to stop telling people about the dangers of them. Um, and I think that they've really been masking this public health issue to kind of, uh, muffle criticism and minimize, um, criticism for these turf fields that are, that are very legitimate, you know, points of criticism. So I think, I would rather go the route of asking the city to reinstate the heat warnings, to make it part of the mayor's emergency heat protocols. They took it out of the heat protocols, and now if you go to the, um, the, you know, the protocol, they'll say, like, for example, their last summer when they were over a hundred degrees, they said, you know, during extreme heat, people should limit their time outdoors. That's all they said. But it was nothing specific in their heat emergency plan. They removed all responsibility for heat warnings. DPR no longer has to do them. DGS no longer has to do them, and Department of Health no longer has to do them for the fields. And that's, to me, um, really negligent on the part of the city. So I, I would like to go that route, and then once this, and then ask Maray to follow city guidelines. But I think the gap in the city guidelines, it seems to be a deliberate shift from, because they, they stopped cold in twenty twenty-two.
Commissioner Nagy?
Oh.
Commissioner Grunwald?
I think Commissioner Grunwald was.
I don't have Commissioner Grunwald on, on, on my screen, sorry.
Oh, she's there.
Am I on here?
Yes, you are.
So I'd like to know who is legally liable if a child or someone from, someone else from our community suffers a severe medical event from using the private Maray plastic turf field in the heat? Uh, who is legally liable for a child or someone in our community who is injured walking on or playing on a one hundred and fifty-five degree field? Does anybody know? Because it seems like that would be a very distinct possibility.
I would, I would only, I don't know the answer to that. I'm, I'm not a lawyer. I would only say, Commissioner Grunwald, that, um, in my thinking about this and the responsibility that this commission has towards our residents, uh, and I in particular, towards my single-member district constituents, that we owe it to the community at least to advise them of elevated surface temperatures on artificial turf fields. It's really as simple as that. It's not terribly complex. Municipalities do this all over the country. I've just cited DC's generic regulations, and Commissioner Finacy, I would support certainly petitioning the District of Columbia, uh, to amend. Again, I say the resolution speaks to that, right? It needs to be more specific, though, for the District of Columbia guidelines to be effective, not just about heat advisories, heat warnings generally, with all sorts of things that we should not do when it's very hot, but also play on artificial turf fields. Um, I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can certainly, uh, petition the District of Columbia. I would say, in this particular case, this is a classic example of where our experience in our little part of the world can inform the bigger picture, that we have a circumstance at hand now. Community use is going to happen at the field, and therefore, working with Maray in conversation with the community, come up with some guidelines that would be appropriate for our purposes. We share those with the city, too. Commissioner Finacy, do what you're suggesting. Try to inform their view. But to Commissioner Grunwald's point, I do think it's important, again, that we at least advise people of this. That's the least, I think, that we, that we can do. Um, Commissioner, Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. I hope I'm not muted. Um, I wanted to do it, sorry, I was looking up, there was a, a heat advisory put in the chat, and I was trying to look at that while you were talking, so my apologies. Um, and thank you to Sharon for putting, Shannon, for putting that up. Um, in, in partial. Um, in, in partial answer to Carol's question about legal liability in particular recording relating to Maray, um, I'm, I'm not pretending to give legal advice here. In fact, I'm emphatically not giving legal advice. I'm just saying that their sign says you use the fields at your own risk. So I think that that, I saw a picture of their sign. It was in one of the emails I saw. And that's what it said. So I would take them at their word and say that they don't intend to be liable for any accidents that happen or any injuries that happen on their field, community use or otherwise. So that still begs half of your question.
Um, again, I, Trey Holloway is on the line. Trey, if you'd like to come in and speak to the issues we're discussing, feel free.
Uh, sure, I could say a few things. Um, the first is, you know, I know, Commissioner Sherman, we exchanged some emails about this. I don't know if we talked about it exactly like this though. You asked if we had any guidelines. I said, no, we don't have anything that we make publicly available. We have some things we use internally. But I didn't get the sense from you that in our email exchange that you were wanting to put together a, a resolution to then develop some guidelines. What I will say as far as Maray goes, you know, we are, we look forward and are focused on getting the fields ready and making them available for folks to use. From a race standpoint, we trust community members to make good judgments about using the field, whether that's, you know, it's hot or there are thunderstorms. For example, yesterday I was outside with my kids and they were riding their bikes and I heard the, the storms rolling in and I said, it's time to go inside. We're going inside. I think other parents and adults in the community can make good decisions. That being said, you know, we don't have a problem if the uh, if the ANC wants to develop some sort of guidelines that are distributed to community members via various channels. We don't see a role for Maray to play in that though. So we, we're not opposed to that, but we don't think there is a role for us um, to, to play.
Okay, Trey, thanks. I appreciate that. Commissioner Gore.
Actually, it's Commissioner Simmons.
I'm sorry, she's not on the screen. Commissioner Simmons.
Uh, so I just wanted to say, I would like to err on the caution of the ANC trying to take on guidelines in regards to the turf field and the temperatures of the field. As has been mentioned, there's already a sign out there that's play at your own risk. If you want to educate the community, I think every newsletter that you send out or every post, you can remind community members about that, but I just think we're getting too involved um, in something to where we're, it's gonna, it can be inferred that we're accepting the risk. So I just would prefer if we get as less involved as we can, because this isn't the ANC's field. The ANC doesn't control what people do. And if people take their children out there, then I don't want it to come back on the ANC. So I think I would prefer if we just send out a notice to the community, it's hot on these days, one, two, three, and the sign is already there at play on your own risk, so you go out there and it's hot, you get burned. That's on your own.
That's great.
Commissioner Gore.
Yeah, um, so Trey's, you know, comment was really emphasized my point about having this discussion with them in advance. They're not willing to play with us on this and I can understand why. And in regard to the resolution under the be it resolved section, why that matters is because the last sentence under that first paragraph said the guideline shall be in place prior to the launch of the fields, now pending issuance of certificate of occupancy. So that's, you know, that's a, that's a big difference. And that's why I said it's, it's not just a simple resolution, uh, making a statement. Um, there are some clauses in there that matter. And uh, with Maray not, you know, saying that they don't feel that this is an issue for them to be involved in with the ANC, I think that, that bears significant weight on the resolution.
Well, that resolutions, of course, are meant to be amended. Um, they're put up for discussion and meant to be amended. It can be amended. Um, what I'm hearing um, from the commissioners is that they're, and correct me commissioners if I'm wrong, that there is some support for advising the community of the elevated temperatures on artificial turf fields when it's, when the weather is hot and that um, there would then perhaps be some support for the commission. I certainly can do this. I do this on my own to um, provide that advisory in some fashion that would be effective to the community as a whole. Is there agreement to do that? Commissioner Goslin.
I actually think that I side with uh, Commissioner Finacy. I think we need to be talking to the city about a, about a uh, a, a, a notification process. I, I mean, um, and it, because it, it goes beyond our neighborhood, but it also goes beyond uh, you know, it goes to all the fields in our neighborhood. And um, and so I, I mean, having the ANC do it seems like a recipe for being ineffective. And I'd hope we could, I'm happy to consider a resolution in the fall uh, that addresses the issue of getting the city notification process back up and running. Um, call, calling.
Yeah, I just, I just would reiterate, we do not have a district wide remit. We talk about this all the time and we may disagree. Um, we're an ANC with a very specific charge that concerns our district. While again, I'm happy to propose to the city language stemming from what we believe is important to do in our ANC that they could then take into account. I don't, I think we can do both of those things. Um, but in any event, as I continue to view, Commissioner Simmons.
I was just gonna say that I know you're saying that it relates to our ANC, but this, this is something that is true and something you're passionate about. It should go beyond our ANC. That's all.
Yeah, we, we uh, again, it's a kind of a philosophical disagreement or understanding of what our technical remit is. We can pass resolutions until the cows come home about the whole district and they're not going to carry great weight. They're not going to matter. What we do have jurisdiction over is our own area. And if we're not willing to take action in our own district, then that, then we don't. That's, that's fine.
But I think, but I think it's a little hypocritical because when we talk about other resolutions that affect the city, we make those resolutions and those decisions. So.
I'm sorry.
So what I'm saying is, what I, what I'm saying is everyone in the housing, everyone needs housing. We make resolution and saying we don't need house. You're saying that turf field is dangerous for everyone. People shouldn't be on it, but we only, it only matters for our ANC. If it matters for everyone, we should advocate for the entire city. Commissioners have gone and spoken and testified about things that affect our entire city. So it feels cherry picking. It feels that we're only going after Maray because I'm directly impacted. If I really care about the health and safety of people and turf fields, I will take this to the city and I will testify on this and I will advocate on this. It just feels that my target is Maray and I'm gonna do everything to stop this field from happening. And it's a lot of us in the community that want to use this field and would like this to go on and would like for it not to be delayed because there are people who are against it. So my thought is if you really care about this and this is something that's really passionate and we don't want turf fields in our water, we need to do something at the city level. So we can't only say that it matters in our ANC, but we go and testify about not having something that affects the entire city. It just, it's, it's, it's gaslighting. It's very manipulative. And it's only choosing what's important to you because of where this is.
I, first of all, I, I regret, I have to say publicly, your choice of words. I'm not gaslighting. I'm addressing what I believe is a legitimate safety issue. I've already acknowledged that we can appeal to the city. At the same time, I'm, I'm reminding us that we have our district that we are directly responsible for. It's uh, that's really all it is. Um, but I regret your choice of words and your accusation about gaslighting and, and about being hypocritical. I don't think there's any place for that. I think it's inappropriate and I urge you not to use that language.
I can use the type of words that I would like. So I don't, so I don't tell you.
Let me get beyond that then, just to see, in fact, if we do have, uh, Commissioner Nagy, just one quick second, if we do have some agreement uh, that we would um, make a statement by the uh, commission to the community as a public awareness, public education exercise. Um, and simply talk about uh, elevated surface temperatures on artificial turf during hot weather.
So are you making a proposal? Are you, are you proposing something now?
Yes, Peter, I am.
Well, let me, let me just um, say this and Commissioner Grunwald has had her hand up for a while.
I'm sorry, I can't see her.
Yeah, I, I, I got the um, speaking order. But um, regarding that, if, if we're not gonna move on the resolution commissioners, because we're running way over time on this topic, I suggest we, you know, um, delay the resolution until you have something, Bruce, that you think you could pass or however you want to do it or call for the vote. But we're, we're running into time on this topic. Let me go to Commissioner Grunwald and Nagy.
Um, Commissioner Sherman, you asked if there's any support for your resolution? And yes, I have, um, I support your resolution wholeheartedly. I think it's commendable to um, to uh, uh, warn people who live in our community that we are responsible for of this danger. And uh, you know, we're not council members. I think um, Commissioner Simmons thinks she's a DC council member, but she's not. She's just an ANC person who represents one portion of the ANC. I think it's our responsibility. We are responsible for the people who live in our districts in the ANC. I'm not responsible for the entire city. Um, I think it's um, important for us to do this, Bruce, and it can be used as a, as something that we can send to our council people to urge them to do this for the entire city. But that's not us. That's not our job. We're not council members. So um, so again, I do support your resolution, Bruce. Thank you.
Commissioner Nagy.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to ask the chair to enforce the rules of decorum. Please, it's completely inappropriate for commissioners to be bad mouthing other commissioners um, during an ANC meeting or anywhere else for that matter. And I'd like for it to stop, please.
Sure, and it goes both ways. Yep.
Is there anything that I just said that would lead you to enforce a decorum rule against me, Commissioner Gore?
I'm not even going to address that, Commissioner Nagy. I did not.
Why don't we enforce it against Commissioner Simmons?
No, you go on and talk. You have the floor. I'm trying to talk to you and you're interrupting. So that really means you don't want to hear what I have to say.
I hear what you have to say a lot.
I have to say, again, you interrupt me. If you would like to hear what I have to say, please don't interrupt me. What I was saying, what I was saying was that I did not say anything of the like. I said that it goes both ways. And I said that because there are commissioners. We just had a commissioner say that Commissioner Simmons thinks she's a council member. I think Commissioner Simmons might have felt inappropriate about that. Commissioner Sherman felt that what Commissioner Simmons said to her was inappropriate. So it goes both ways across all commissioners about the decorum. I was actually agreeing with you, but I was saying that it goes both ways. Okay? Commissioner Sherman, what would you like to do?
Can I speak now? Can I speak now?
Sure, go on.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that we agree on something and I would like to see commissioners not use phrases like hypocrites and gaslighting about other commissioners. It's completely inappropriate and I'll just make that point again. Thank you.
Commissioner Sherman, what would you like to do with this?
Um, I'm gonna call for a vote on this.
All right.
I move, we pass the resolution. Do I have a second?
A second. Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion fails, but I am going to do a um, go back and do a roll call. In favor was Sherman and Grunwald. Opposed was Gore, Goslin, and Simmons. Um, abstained was Nagy. And Commissioner Finacy, what was your vote?
Um, my internet went spotty and I couldn't hear the statement. So can you repeat that and so I can vote? I'm sorry.
Well, the vote is on the, the Sherman resolution as is.
Okay, as is, okay.
Commissioner Sherman made the motion. It was properly seconded. The vote in favor was Sherman and Grunwald. The vote opposed Gore, Goslin, Simmons, Nagy abstained. What, what's your vote?
Sure, um, at this point, opposed.
The motion fails. Thank you, Commissioner Sherman.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you commissioners too for the discussion. But um, Commissioner Sherman, I do think there's probably areas that you could rework your resolution and probably get a unanimous vote. Um, I definitely agree with Commissioner Finacy's approach on it. I think that's a good approach. And if we take that, you know, sentence personally out regarding Maray and um, you know, the timeline that you had referenced, that was one thing that I greatly oppose having in there. And if we can get it to the community seven days in advance, that would be greatly appreciated.
I'll take, I'll, I'll take all that away.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next thing on the agenda real quick um, is civic court update for Commissioner Simmons. Then Commissioner Sherman has an update on the Utah Nebraska Avenue and then we'll be into community announcements.
Okay, could, could I just, I interrupted for one second. I, I really am gonna have to go. I apologize for this, but uh, I'm, I, I'm gonna have to sign off here. Um, um, thank you for moving all the votes up in front.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Simmons?
Yes, so I just wanted to update the community on the civic court site. So DMPED has acknowledged receipt of our ANC resolution and um, the minority opinions regarding the civic court site. They've indicated that the next step is for an internal review and decision-making process. So at this time, there is no set timeline for selecting a developer or moving forward with the project. So as I get updates regarding this project, I will be sure to share those out with the community and I'll monitor any progress and share updates as they become available. That's my.
Thank you. Commissioner Nagy.
So I wanted to ask Commissioner Simmons if she's heard anything about the funding for the community center library project.
Aside from the funding that's in the fiscal year 26 budget, no.
No, okay. Have they discussed at all private funding with you? For the rest of the project?
Just going back to my statement, I don't have any other updates at this time and when more updates are available, I will share them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, Commissioner Sherman, you want to give your update on Nebraska and Utah?
Yeah, so as all will recall, um, at our last meeting, uh, we had a robust discussion about the measures that were put in place June 21st and 22nd by Maray at the intersection of Utah and Nebraska uh, in adherence to the transportation safety plan uh, that has been part of the development of the athletic fields at the Episcopal Center for Children. Um, and we had a lot of community members who voiced uh, concerns and views about that. Uh, DDOT District Department of Transportation Representative Christoph Bosmer was in attendance uh, and he heard and addressed those concerns. We had preceded that meeting with a survey that 455 residents took expressing their views with 285 comments. I mentioned at the time that in a span of three days, at least in my understanding of ANC history, it was the largest single response we've ever seen. So a lot of community interest and concern about this. Um, I shared that intersection as a commissioner with Commissioners Grunwald and Finacy. Our uh, our single member districts intersect there. They too have heard from a number of residents directly. They've been very much involved in this. I welcome their participation in this conversation tonight. We had asked DDOT uh, to come back to us with a report and update on what they might see as remediation of the intersection. That means taking into account the concerns that neighbors have uh, provided in opposition. Those that feel that the flex posts that were installed are um, in their view unsightly, unsafe, unnecessary, along with other constituents who, once they have seen the flex posts, have commented that they actually address important pedestrian safety issues at the intersection and traffic calming. So we asked um, DDOT um, and Maray, but particularly DDOT to go back and take a look at what could be done. And I understand they had a meeting with Maray and Maray's uh, And I understand they had a meeting with Maray and Maray's Transportation Consultant on Thursday of last week. And today, Christoph Bosmer, who could not be here tonight, sent us an update. And essentially, what he has proposed in his update, and I will read from it to you and to the members of the community, that there are design changes that the parties, Maray and DDOT, have agreed to that are as follows. To reduce the number of flex posts in half. The number presently at the intersection is around 70. To reduce in half spacing the flex, every flex post at 10 feet instead of 5 feet. To offset flex posts 1 to, 1, 1 to 2 feet from the edge of the roadway striping. To remove flex posts from inside the intersection. To address accessibility concerns, accessibility concerns for the resident on the northwest corner of the intersection. I believe that is Rebecca Maydeck's property. Removing the last couple of flex posts to allow access to her concrete pad. And to address turning challenges for the C-85 bus from Utah onto Nebraska by shifting the flex post back a couple of feet. They would propose to do this as quickly as possible that Maray's contractor, MCN Build, would implement the changes once Maray sees, receives its certificate of occupancy. And that if the timeline is delayed, that DDOT will brief the Department of Buildings to ensure the new flex post layout can move forward without affecting the certificate of occupancy. So in a nutshell, they're proposing to reduce by half the number of flex posts and to, and to adjust their placement. Now, I talked to Christoph today about this to get a bit of a heads up. I hadn't seen his report yet, but he briefed me orally on it. And he also indicated that there is a bio-retention bed that is slated, and I have mentioned this before, on the edge of, on one of the, on the northeast side of the, of the intersection along Utah that would aid in further restricting traffic and helping calm traffic and add to safety at the intersection in addition to providing sort of green infrastructure. And there was previously a bio-retention facility that had been earmarked for, on Nebraska Avenue, essentially on the southwest side of the intersection, that DDOT, longer term, is looking at possibly reinstating. Those two bio-retention facilities, in addition to the adjustments of the flex posts, would reconfigure the intersection with traffic safety, pedestrian safety, traffic calming ideas in mind. The matter of how many flex posts there are and their placement is going to be a topic of continued conversation, and I alerted Christoph to that. Again, he couldn't be here tonight, but I told him that I would give this report, take further community comments, and, and provide the feedback. So that's a quick update. Commissioners Grunwald and Finacy, please come into this. I know Commissioner Finacy, you've offered comments back to Christoph, maybe we'll start with you.
Thank you, yeah. My comments, basically, I, you know, I thank DDOT for at least kind of initially looking at all the feedback and making some adjustments, which in particular to my resident, my constituent in the corner of, northwest corner of Utah and Nebraska, I think would really help with their parking situation. But one of my concerns is that we have, we're in the summer, which is a downtime, right? And so we haven't seen how this goes into play when St. John's is back and when Maray's field is open and there are games. And so they were talking, DDOT had offered to start doing the bio-retention in September, and then other concrete permanent situations to follow. And I think it would be more prudent to wait a few months and observe the traffic flow and have the neighbors observe the traffic flow. Because when I read the transportation study that was done for Maray, the original one, I thought it was overly optimistic in the amount of public transportation they thought kids were going to use. I'm like, no lacrosse player is lugging all of his gear to a game on a bus. And, you know, base catcher, a baseball catcher is not lugging his gear on a bus, like. So I think that was overly optimistic, number one. Number two, it was done before the Better Bus Network, which changed the routes a little bit. So I think we're going to have more vehicular traffic than the traffic study predicted, number one. But also, we want to look at what happens with school. And if they start doing construction of these new things in September, that's, that's like a rough time to do construction. Because oftentimes, you know, our quietest months in the city are in the summer. So I, I think we need to give a little time.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah. So, can you hear me? Am I on?
Yep.
My constituents are unhappy with the appearance of the flex post. And so they are going to continue to be unhappy with the flex posts. They had requested more expensive, but better appearing concrete bump outs, not plastic poles that are going to look like hell in, in just, you know, several months. They already look like hell in one regard. They look like hell brand new, and they're going to be even worse after they've gotten beaten up for a while. So my constituents are not happy. And they would not like to wait to have this taken care of. They would like their opinions to be taken up as soon as possible. They don't want this to be delayed. They don't want to see what happens. They just want this taken care of as soon as possible. They are also still worried about snow, snow collection. Thank you.
And we have a, Commissioners, if you have comments on this, please raise your hand and I'll come to you. I do have community members who've had their hands up. Rebecca Maydeck, and then Jennifer Leonard, Rebecca?
Yes, hello, thank you. Ashley Witty, who shares the corner with me, couldn't be here because they're traveling and their flight was delayed. So she told me that I have her proxy, she agrees with everything I'm going to say. Ashley and I are home a lot. We've noticed such a dangerous uptick, what do I say? The, the flex post, putting the flex post in has now caused this intersection that hasn't had an accident since I've lived here since 1998, to have a lot of near misses. People are getting impatient, they're beeping their horns, they're trying to go around, the car's turning right, and they're in the opposite lane. I had one guy go to the middle of the intersection, then he's backing up in the opposite lane to get back in line. It, it's just people are confused, they're pulling up to the light, and then they're in the flex post, so then they back all the way out of the flex post to wait for the light to turn green. It is an accident waiting to happen. And this has not been an accident-prone intersection. I, like I said, I don't recall any, any accidents since I've lived here other than a kid falling asleep and crashing into a pole. That wouldn't have been caused by the intersection. We're the only traffic light here. And the snow removal is going to be a headache. You know, I just, I don't understand that the guy who collects for the mailbox on the corner blocked the whole lane the other day. I was turning, coming from Rock Creek Park, turning onto Utah to get, you know, make a U-turn in front of my house. He pulled up his truck, he's emptying the mailbox, nobody could get through. Because now the, the intersection is jammed. The only people parking, you put these flex posts up to stop parking, and all the city workers that come or the gas company park in front of Ashley's house in between the flex posts because it's such a wide turn. I still don't understand why we took away that right turn lane. It's making people confused, it's making them aggravated, and traffic's just going to increase. I don't understand why we don't wait and see what the, take them all out, wait and see what the problems are, if any, and then reevaluate what to do. To me, that's the most logical approach. And you said that the flex posts are going to be removed, but they're going to be every 10 feet instead of every 5 feet? That doesn't really help because you're still extending the flex post to where they are. You know what I mean? I'm, I'm a little confused by that as being a remediation. That's going to be more confusing because there are going to be wider space and people are going to pull it. So again, we're fixing a problem that doesn't exist. I, I just don't see the logic behind that. Let's wait and see if there's a problem before we do anything. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Jennifer?
Hey, everyone, I have my husband here, Barton.
Hey Barton.
We've chosen to spend our 24th anniversary participating in this meeting because obviously the flex posts matter to us too, as we also live on the corner of Utah Avenue and Nebraska Avenue. I thought I was going to have something interesting to say, but I think between the comments of Commissioner Finacy and Grunwald, and then Rebecca, you've said it all. They are unsightly, unsafe, and unnecessary. Period. I'm not sure where the unsightly solution has come in. I haven't heard it. But I agree, the, to me, the best option is to remove them, assess pedestrian, vehicle, and bicycle safety issues, and then come back with possible solutions that people who are most impacted get to actually weigh in on. What I've, my last point here is, what I find a little confounding is why the city gets to develop options and then only Maray got to pick. Right? It's, they have 1/4 in this corner situation, but we, as residents, have the other three corners and had no opportunity, as far as I'm aware, to give input on how both visually and safety-wise, the flex posts and the choice would impact our property.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that, Jennifer. Mary Callahan, go ahead.
Hi. I drive this intersection just about every day. And there are a couple of concerns I have, which is the new C-83, now instead of during the week, drives this intersection every single day of the week. And it is a very difficult corner when that bus is taking a left-hand turn now to come on to Utah. And the other thing I want to mention about that is another intersection we haven't even been thinking about as far as that new bus goes, which is the right turn. It's now taking from McKinley onto Nevada where it swings way out. And that also is a difficult intersection. But it's become much more difficult to navigate. Becky? I'm with you.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioners, any comments? I don't see any other hands raised among members of the community. So what I propose that we do is take back what we've heard tonight, which isn't admittedly a wealth of commentary from a large number of community members, but to reiterate concerns that we had heard in the survey and previously, and continue the conversation with DDOT and Maray. I will say that Christoph indicated that DDOT feels it is important, in their view, to adhere to the conditions of the BZA order, which is understandable, given the fact that it was a BZA order. And so he's indicating certain parameters around their flexibility to make changes. Commissioner Finacy, you're concerned that we wait to see how things develop. Are you indicating that you would not want to have DDOT and Maray, as they've agreed to do, take the measures, remediation steps that they've indicated?
I think the steps are not in a bad direction. I just don't know that they are going, okay, as far as the steps to reduce the number of flex posts in half, offsetting the flex post 1 to 2 feet from the edge of the striping, removing flex posts from inside the intersection, I think those are okay. Address the accessibility concerns for the resident on the northwest corner, that's Becky Maydeck, by removing the last couple to add access to her pad, I think that's great. And address the turning challenges for the C-85 bus, that point number three, I think that's okay. But what I am concerned about is when they have their permanent program, which I posted in the chat, that point one, where it says it's going to have the bio-retention facility, and that's going to start this September. And then ultimately, in point number two, replace the flex posts with permanent concrete curb extensions. I'm not ready to go to the, the permanent structure until we've seen what's going on in that intersection. I mean, it could be, it could be a hot mess. It's out, you know, from what Becky is observing with near misses at the intersection, you know, we, we just have a lot more flexibility if we have flex posts that are screwed into the asphalt that we can unbolt, and if we need to change it. If they've dug up the street and jackhammered things and rerouted drainage and whatever, and then we have to undo it, it's going to be a nightmare, and it's going to be a nightmare to put it in as well.
I think that, given the timeline for the more permanent measures, and I think it's very important to thank you for mentioning this because my summary didn't cover the longer-term measures that they have indicated that they will take to replace the flex posts, because that addresses the concern of the immediate neighbors. And while it isn't going to happen quickly enough for many of them at the intersection, if it is going to happen eventually, at least that is some comfort, that there will be a more aesthetically pleasing alternative that will still accomplish the same objectives. But I think, right now where we sit, we need to get back to DDOT with respect to our feedback. And what I'm hearing you say, if I'm understanding you correctly, that doing these measures now would be important, looking towards these longer-term solutions and understanding what the traffic impacts might be along with that. Jennifer, let's come back to you, go ahead. Yeah, you're muted, Jennifer, sorry.
Thank you, and thank you for the second opportunity. I want to respond to Ms. Finacy. I don't think we can assess the traffic patterns with some flex posts in place. And so I think the, right now, the, the impacts are projected and not real. And we haven't seen any increased traffic due to Maray. So leaving some flex posts in place doesn't allow us to really see what's happening in absence of anything. So I would recommend moving them completely, and then assessing what's the impact, and therefore, what are the best solutions, given the impact?
Okay. Thank you again, Jennifer, for that. And I know we're running out of time on this, but we wanted to get back to everyone with what DDOT is proposing to do to let you know. And we'll share the language that they've shared with us, so you can see that specifically. And we can take further community comment back to DDOT. But they are proposing, just to be very clear, some immediate remediation with a longer-term program that would remove the flex posts, just to be clear. That's what they're proposing to do. And Maray and, and DDOT had a conversation around this. Trey Holloway, if you're still on the call, is there anything you would care to add to this because you were in the conversation, I'm assuming?
Yes, I was there. I, I'm trying to think if there's anything relevant that would be good to add. I will say, I went out to the intersection myself and spoke with a couple neighbors about it and, you know, expressed that Maray is willing to work with DDOT on this. And when I say work with, I mean, we're willing, you know, within reason and a reasonable timeline as well to work on some sort of remediation, meaning we're paying our traffic engineers to work this up so that DDOT can look at some different options because they need somebody to, to write it up and then pay our contractor to do that work. Because, you know, we, we understand the concerns. I don't, just to go back, you know, Maray's traffic engineers developed this plan in coordination with DDOT, and DDOT signed off on it. DDOT wants to see some changes. We don't have an issue with that, you know, it's Maray, like, we don't, we, I don't want to insert my judgment, I'm a CFO at a school. Like, I don't know what the best traffic calming stuff is. So we're trying to work with DDOT on that, and we're trying to be flexible to meet the needs of the community. I think, I think DDOT's trying to do the same. They were fairly insistent, though, that I think that some of the things that folks don't like were the intended outcomes that they were looking for, though. So I think that's going to be a challenge in working with them on anything radically different.
Right, okay. Well, Commissioners and members of the community, we can wrap this up, we need to. We will share their exact feedback, their proposed actions with the community, and continue the conversation and report back to everyone with respect to what DDOT intends to do in the short and the long run, and the opportunity for further feedback.
I think you can't see me, I don't think you can see my hand raised, can you?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, Carol.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but I would like to speak after you're done.
Yeah, please do, go ahead.
So how about a neighborhood meeting between the neighbors and Maray and DDOT, meeting on the street? I've done it a million times, meeting with neighbors, meeting with DDOT, and, you know, all the parties. Why can't we do that? Instead of just Trey Holloway meeting with DDOT, DDOT meeting with Trey Holloway, why don't we get some neighbors in there? And meet on the street, with a couple of ANC Commissioners too thrown in.
Absolutely. Happy to work with you and Commissioner Finacy, since we overlap in that intersection, and with the neighbors, with Maray, with DDOT to, to have such a meeting. The intention, of course, of the July 14 meeting, the intention of the survey, the intention of this meeting, and so forth and so on, of course, has been to have has been to have a conversation of sorts, but I take your point. We can certainly do what you're recommending.
I think we should organize that, Bruce and Laura. I think we should, the three of us should organize that meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. All right. Yep. Thank you, everyone.
Yep, thank you, Bruce. So moving on with the agenda, Commissioners, are there any announcements? Any Commissioners have any announcements? Oh, Commissioner Finacy?
Yeah, I do. And this is a good one. At the last ANC meeting, I had reported that as of that afternoon, DGS and DCPS had stated that they would not be remediating any damage to the field done as a result of their construction. After the ANC meeting, the next morning, I heard from them, and they said that they would be fixing any damage to the field as a result of their actions. That's very welcome because they've since dumped a lot more rubble and a lot more trucks have driven all over that field. But we had a very productive walk in the park and around the site with a DGS maintenance fellow, capital planning projects for DGS and DPR, and I think, and also urban forestry. So I think we have a better kind of understanding going forward. And I'm hopeful that, you know, this fall, when they get done, that, you know, at least any damage will be restored and, you know, hopefully will even maybe look a little better. And also the practice at the Lafayette Tennis Center for the Citibank Open was a, was a real treat for a lot of the neighbors. And also, we have, you know, brand-new resurfacing done to professional standards. So that was kind of, you know, again, that we didn't have a lot of community notice, and that was something that we need to work on, but the outcome, as far as court surfacing, is awesome.
I agree. I wish I could have seen that. Commissioner Simmons, then, Nagy?
Yes, hi. I thought I had sent my news and updates to SMD05 last night, but I didn't. It left in my draft. So I'll send that out tonight, but I just wanted to highlight to my single-member district residents that we have sewer and sewer lining work to be happening on some blocks in Livingston. 4154, I think 4100 might be in Peters. 41st Street, which is Peters, 3900 Block of Livingston, and 3700 Block of Jennifer's, so I think that might be Nagy's, and then 5400 of Connecticut. So I had a meeting with DC Water a couple months ago about the sewer lining. So just be aware of that. There may be sewage blockage. Don't use the water. Follow their guidelines as best as you can, and things happen. And if it happens, go to my website and you'll see the steps to take, to remediate. Also, there was an update from DC Water on the sewage outflow in northeast, just for you guys to touch base about that. And then lastly, DC State Fair is going to be happening September 6th on Bryant Street, Chevy Chase Day, September 20th at the Civic Core site. And then the last thing, there is a Chevy Chase Main Street event, sip and snack crawl. I'm going to put the link in the chat for you to purchase tickets, but it's going to be a restaurant crawl to support our local businesses. And your ticket will include cocktail and appetizers for each of the five neighborhood favorites, and there'll be music along the way.
Thank you. Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, thanks, Corinthea, for mentioning the work in my SMD. My constituents are really well aware of it. Actually, we've been corresponding quite a lot about it. And I'm in constant contact, it seems, with DC Water because we have many, many water projects in SMD07. I'd like to go back to the Civic Core for just a moment and ask Commissioner Simmons if her communications with DEPAD are in writing. And if they're not, I'd like to ask that they do be in writing and that you copy the rest of the Commission on them. That's my request. I guess I can put it in writing.
Yep, you can put it in writing. Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, I want to come back to the Chevy Chase Playground and commend the Cap City Little League folks working in conjunction with DGS to maintain that field. As I say, I have a morning walk that takes me right by there, and I have been deeply impressed by the state of that field, even after downpours the night before. They have maintained that field in incredibly good shape. To my knowledge, they've missed very few games. As I say, I had a conversation with Luke Harding, who was a constituent and a Cap City Little League coach, and he gave me chapter and verse on the efforts of their groundskeepers, volunteers, obviously, parents, who worked to put the tarp out. They worked to rake the field. They worked to maintain it all the way around. And I would highlight the fact that this field sees a lot of use, and it was designed with drainage, that if you look at the field, and I can send everybody pictures, that it actually is a very good design to ensure that the field can stay in really good shape. But they just do a tremendous amount of hard work. And again, if you go by that field and see the condition it's in, even after torrential downpours that we've had the night before, it's just astonishing how well it's been maintained. So just want to get a shout out to all those folks at Cap City Little League.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no other updates. Commissioner Simmons, is there a Treasury report?
No Treasury's report. No, not today.
And so, so far, possible items for September 8th, which is our next meeting, regular meeting. I still have Chevy Chase Main Street on there. Any additional Civic Core updates? We'll do, we'll be doing a discussion and possible vote on new members to the Race Committee, Commissioner Sherman, proposed bylaw amendments, and then Commissioner Sherman, the PEPCO discussion, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, with that is 9:10. Everyone, thank you for coming.
Is there another item for our September meeting?
If there is, just email it to me. That's all I have thus far.
Okay.
Okay. 9:10, I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and hanging in with the Commission. I know a lot of us are on leave, and some of you guys are too. The ANC will be in recess through August, so we won't be meeting. Our committees will not be meeting. We resume regular meetings on September 8th. However, all of our Commissioners are available. If you need them, just reach out. But thank you so much for coming out tonight. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. Great meeting.